Okay, next we'll have comments from visitors. If you have a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have about three minutes.
Hello, good evening. My name is Terrellin Williams. I reside at 348 Pioneer Drive, Fulton, Missouri. And I have a few things I wanted to say. I work at Fulton-Hastor. I'm a foster grandparent. And I know those kids aren't big enough to be outside, or they do, they're in the fence. But the traffic that goes up and down that street is horrible. I, and since school has started, I have watched school buses go real fast down that street. I have been trying to film it, so, you know, because I wanted to bring it, you know, with me. But, I mean, they go so fast, I can't get the bus numbers. And I mean, and the cars and stuff are just as bad. And I mean, it's really getting bad down that way. And, you know, it's just, I think they, you know, wish they could patrol that area a little bit more. Like I said, I know our kids can't get out, but that's not the point. School is starting now, and it's real bad. And Westminster College, okay. I went down Westminster College on the sidewalk, as you see, I have a scooter. And I hit a bump. That sidewalk is so bad on that whole college side, you know. And those kids pay enough money where we could get the sidewalk fixed. I mean, it is bad. I have seen people fall, everything. I mean, those sidewalks are bad. So I, you know, wanted to bring that to their attention. Okay. And housing, I know you can't do too much about housing, but the traffic, you know, I remember when they first put the wall up, and I knew why, and I understood it. But since they have taken that wall down, and with their freeze store there, the traffic has flowed through nicely, you know, because they can go back out the other way. It's not them zooming around, you know, some of them still do. And then the, the traffic is so bad, and the speed, they speed through there. I was standing on the sidewalk one night, and I just happened to walk, get ready to walk to my door, and a car came up on the sidewalk. And then, I live right by the cemetery, and they hit all down the cemetery wall. Okay? So they were talking about, saying with the city about speed bumps and stuff. And, I mean, there's too many kids down there. And, you know, like I said, I understood when they first put the wall up, but this last time, it seemed like the traffic flowed a little different. You know, it was better. But, those are my, those are my things that I wanted to talk about, you know. I know, you know, it has to be a process, so I'm just wanting to see, but I wanted to bring my concerns to you. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm, I'm sure the chief was listening. Okay, tonight we have two public hearings. The formal, the format of the hearing will be that I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, as well as three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of. We ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address. We will now have the first public hearing, and Madam Clerk, would you read the public hearing, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the purpose of certifying the rate of levy for property taxes for the 2024 tax year within the City of Fulton at $0.5427 for each $100 of the assessed valuation of said property.
I'll issue the first call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Seeing no one come forward, I will issue the second call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Again, seeing no one come forward, I will issue the third call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Very well. I will now have three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the issue at hand. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of? Seeing no one, second call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the Again, seeing no one come forward, I'll issue the third call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter. Seeing no one come forward, I will declare the hearing closed at this time. Now we'll move on to the second public hearing. Madam Clerk?
To propose the replacement of a roughly 1,100-foot section of a storm sewer that is more than 100 years old, dilapidated and constricts the flow of drainage for an extensive area of the community. The area of storm sewer is bounded by Westminster Avenue to the west, West A Street to the north, Nickel Street to the east, and West Fifth Street to the south. The total project cost is estimated to be $1,546,342, I'm sorry, $1,546,342. The city proposes to contribute $810,000 in cash and $206,342 of in-kind labor by the city's engineering department. Grants, funds of $530,000 will be necessary to make up the balance of the project construction and administration costs.
Thank you. Again, I'll ask you to, to come to the podium and give us your name and address. Also, the council would not react at this time. I'll issue the first call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this matter. Seeing no one, I will issue the second call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this matter. Seeing no one, I'll issue the third call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this matter. Again, seeing no one, there will be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter?
Yes, Mayor, tonight I have with me Lincoln Brown with Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, who is helping me and the City of Fulton write this grant for funds, and I'd like to turn it over to Lincoln, so he can give you guys some more information on it.
And again, my name is Lincoln Brown with Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission. We're here to help you guys get this grant applied for and get it in. Part of the process for this requires, either if a community has a comprehensive plan on the books that's recent, you can use that for the needs assessment process, but if you do not, then you need to fill out this needs assessment section in a communal manner, in a collective manner. You guys completed this in, I believe, for your previous CDBG grant, I think, which you guys have copies of in your packet. Essentially, for the CDBG grant, that has to be part of the application, so I'd like to kind of go through and see if you guys had any changes or any recommendations for changes that, to the, the old one, and a change to your priority. If anybody in the audience has, I think you guys had copies at the door for anybody to fill out. If anybody of those, you could gather those at the end of the, at the public hearing, and get those back to me, and then any of your copies, get those back to me. The main purpose of this, again, is to make sure that you're applying for grant funds. These are limited, a limited resource. They come from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, pass through the Department of Economic Development, the State of Missouri. They're, it's a competitive process, there are a lot of communities that apply for it, so one of the things they, they kind of have you do as part of that application is to make sure you're applying for your top priorities, because they, they want to make sure they're giving the money out to the right places. So this is part of that process. Again, this was done in, in late '21, early '22, as part of the demo grant, and again, we, we just need to update it. It has to be done within six months of applying, so we need to update this form again for this process. I will call your attention, so again, anything that may have changed, we can kind of talk about that briefly here, and I could mark down those changes, collect the surveys from you guys, and kind of compile them together in a singular form. The part that's most important, however, is Section G. Those are where you list the top five priorities for the community. And again, I, I kind of like to talk through that with you all, providing some input, and we can get that section covered now, and then use the collected surveys to kind of amplify that and put it in a document. The, I created a spreadsheet last time that kind of had a list of, created a kind of color-coded list, which was part of your OS application. Your previous, previous needs as identified were residential demolition revitalization was your top priority, affordable housing, increasing, expanding availability and homeownership programs were your second category, so it's kind of a combined group, and then transportation, streets and sidewalks were your third category. Stormwater does show up on your top five in your last, in your last needs assessment process as number four, and economic development and job creation training was number five amongst the surveys returned. So again, that's kind of the process for this. If you guys have any comments or questions for me, we can go through those now, I can answer anything that you guys might have.
I think you all have a form in your packet.
Not in your packet, but I did email them to get your copy today.
Okay.
And some chose to get a, a copy.
Okay.
Okay. Those are important, that we all fill these out and get those back.
Yeah. And anybody in the audience here today.
As well.
So I can kind of, again, the, the, the big important one, so you can, if there are any changes that needs to be done to the various sections, A through, I believe, E, you guys can, we'll put those together, and I'll put the consensus answers in. But the, the top five, I think I would suggest maybe a discussion now, if there's any changes to that order, or if that order actually suits now, and then we can update that with whatever surveys we receive back as part of the meeting. Any other, check my list here. I also wanted to provide a brief summary of your, so part of this project, Fulton is state, or citywide, no longer a low to moderate income community, according to HUD's income numbers as of August 1st, they've updated. So you guys had to undertake a LMI survey, which started back in late March, early April. You are, so, for this project, since it's a stormwater project, the area is defined as the drainage basin for this particular corridor of drainage. So the, a survey was conducted, all houses within that drainage basin were sent a survey. I believe there were three, at least three letters sent out by the city. We received roughly 25% response rate back, which, with the required number of surveys that CDBG requires to have a complete survey, you are LMI by 60% by person and by 61% by family. So that, that allows you, this is important, because that by itself is one of the great ways you get access to those funds. You have to be a, a community with a LMI. If the community decides at a later date you want to go after funds in a different category, they fund a lot of infrastructure projects, they fund demo, they fund downtown revitalization, those are all, have different criteria, but a lot of times, the LMI number is what's important. So if you're going after money that's of citywi, citywide benefit, this survey won't work for that, it only works for the drainage area, you would need to undertake a citywide survey. So it's just kind of the LMI process, based on survey and, and service area. The, you've got to find the project budget, needs assessment. The other component of the public hearing, besides just discussing your needs as a group and providing feedback, is thinking through the project in terms of environmental considerations. This, so this project, this hearing is kind of providing double duty for that. So, one of the things that we do as part of the application, there's kind of an early environmental review that we do, and it's just a couple steps for this part, that the actual CDBG environmentals are huge, they, they're, they're a binder by themselves. But initially, the, the main considerations for this project are that this drainage corridor passes through or near historic eligible or, or the historic district here in town. The State Historic Preservation Office will need to be consulted as part of the process. I came by last week and walked the, walked the corridor with Kyle to take pictures for the SHPO consultation. We initiate that as part of the application process to demonstrate, it's part of your project readiness points, so that you've started that process gets you like five points in the application. So that has been completed. We've reviewed the floodplain map and wetlands map, neither one of the, the, the project areas defined, I think, in the, in the proposed alternative and the PER that Kyle's developing, the preliminary engineering report that Kyle's developing, none of those things are relevant for this project. The, the storm tunnel and, and related construction work isn't going to impact any of those features. Endangered species wise, again, there, none of the endangered species that trigger for Callaway County and Fulton are relevant for this project. There will be some tree removal, is the only thing, I think, up on the north end, where it starts above Seventh Street there. There's some trees that'll have to come down. Any tree removal affects bat species, so there's the process of essentially reviewing this with US Fish and Wildlife. Their main comment comes back is, don't cut the trees down outside of the fall/winter. So you need to cut them down between 1st of November and the end of March. So those, that's kind of usually one of the restrictions with cutting trees with a federally-funded project. The other environmental issues, don't believe any of them, other, other ones triggered, but again, this is just a preliminary review, but if anybody has comment on that, feel free to include that information on the needs assessment, you can just handwrite it in. That's, it's just a way to providing information for the community. So the project isn't going to have much of an impact on the environment, nor the environment on the impact because of the underground nature. The other thing that may trigger is, since it's a new pathway, the tribal, tribal communities need to be consulted as well. This was, this had to be done for the demo project, as you're aware, and the related issues with CDBG having been doing it wrong and telling us to do it wrong for the last six-plus years? Anyway, that will also have to be done for this project. We know going in advance how that has to be done, so that is also an issue, because you're essentially going to be digging up new ground for the new corridor. It won't just be building it in place, because the existing one isn't going to be, is, is going to be abandoned, but not demolished or removed. So that's, that's also, that's the other major consideration for this project. So you have any questions related to the environmental review or considerations for the project?
I know I can't respond to him, but I have a question for the clerk. The email that we received today said that you have to have a response by tomorrow at noon, but during his presentation, he offered it up to the public. Is there an opportunity here to have a? Do we have more time to have more people respond to the community needs assessment?
Will Mr. Brown answer that?
Yeah, so we're, kind of trying to complete this in an accelerated manner. The application is due September, Friday, September 6th. So everything we do has to be done before Friday next week, and preferably by Monday, Tuesday this week, so we have time to get it into the digital application. So we, there is some time, but not much.
Maybe if we provide the link on, on social media?
You can do that, yeah. You can give them till next Wednesday or, or Tuesday to respond, like have it open for a week or so. Yeah, that's totally fine. If, if people want to communicate their needs on that, I, I would encourage it. It's just the, the fast nature of what we're trying to get done to make sure we meet the, meet the timeline.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Kyle, we see we have the grant fund, it's $330,000. Is there a possibility to get more of that money, or is this?
That's the limit.
Okay, that's what I.
Yep, that is the limit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That being said, I'll issue the second call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter.
My name is Warren Hallra, 311 Carver Drive, Fulton, Missouri, and I think that's the upper part of this watershed, because I know the water drains from there down into this facility. I'm a member of, one of the fraternity houses on campus, which is spending large amount of monies to restore an 85-year-old structure, so he's taught about history. None of the fraternity houses are in the Westminster College Hilltop Historic District, but a number of them are eligible. My fraternity was built 85 years ago, the Kappa Alpha Order Fraternity, and it, the, the existing storm sewer runs right behind the fraternity house, and then it curves and goes right in front of the Kappa Alpha Order, which is even older, and then the Phi Delta Theta Fraternity down the street is, is older than 85 years. So very historic facilities, and it affects the Westminster campus and the historic area. And I think we ought to pursue possibly, if you need more money, because the National, America's National Churchill Museum is across the street in the watershed. And Senator Hawley, it hasn't gone through Congress, but introduced a resolution to change it from America's National Churchill Museum as a national historic landmark, which would be the second one in Fulton, because the gymnasium is now a historic landmark in the, in, maybe in the next year or so, if Congress so chooses, to ask the National Parks Service to designate the National Churchill Museum as a national historic landmark. And I've got some other thoughts, and I think I'm going to put it in writing and present it to, to council. I'm very much in favor of doing this, because it, it'll affect the community tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now I'll issue the third call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter. Seeing no one come forward, I will close this public hearing, and we'll move on to We have the, the next up is the consent agenda. We have minutes from two meetings. Also, I've appointed Robert Weiss to the Historical Preservation Commission, as well as Mr. Hallra to that commission. He is the cornhole tournament out at the airport and Fulton High School parade. Does anyone want to pull any of those issues off?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Very well. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Thank you.
Welcome back to the Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Hallra.
Okay, we'll move on to the presentation of the July DOA report.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a pretty exciting July, and a few things I just wanted to highlight. Of course, we had on social media and in a press release that Fulton was chosen as Southern Living, one of Southern Living's 15 most affordable small towns to live in. So we were pretty excited about that designation and look forward to being highlighted in the future as well. We also were able to attend an excellent celebration for junior achievement in Chesterfield, Missouri, along with the governor and some other state officials, and I just want to give a shout out to Debbie LaRue. She's been doing a lot of excellent work representing not only Fulton, but the Callaway County community with junior achievement. And again, some exciting things coming, coming up in the future there that will be bringing more information to you. We also kicked off budgeting season, and so I've, I've made it pretty abundantly clear that I have a, an expedited, or an expedited timeline for getting that budget squared away this year. And so I just want to thank our department heads, supervisors, and staff for getting their information turned in and going through that process very quickly again this year. So with that, of course, staff is here. If you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them for you.
I have two questions on the report from Parks and Rec.
Okay. Terrell, can you come up?
One just asked for an update on the, on the golf cart path improvement project.
So that one actually would probably be Kyle, and I think he just stepped out. So I know he's working on those bid documents now. So I don't believe those have gone out just yet, but they are in the works, and they should be going out hopefully very soon to have a lot of options brought back to us to modify, or I'm sorry, to get those addressed, whether in a totality or in a phased manner.
Okay. And then the other, I'm a part of a, of a civic organization, and I found out at a conference I went to this past week, I may have opportunity to up to $50,000 in a park grant. So I'm very interested in the, what continues to be the plans for Carver Park. And I'd like the opportunity to speak to the DOA and anybody else, as well as possibly even the, the park board, about the opportunity of what the improvements that we're looking at for that.
Absolutely. I can give you an update on that, maybe after the meeting, but we would love to have you come to a park board meeting and talk about that.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm the IT Department, with respect With respect to the crowd strike, I'd like to give some kudos out to Mike for finding a solution within a couple of hours to resolve that issue, because that could be very, put us in a very critical situation, and he, he really came through for us.
Okay, any other questions on the D O A report? Seeing none on, enter a motion.
I make a motion to accept the D O A report as written.
Second?
Very well. We have a motion and second to accept the D O A report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. We'll move on to the July financial statement.
Dustin Doherty, City Fulton CFO. City Fulton recorded six months of sales tax in 2024. Collections are up 1.8% from 2023, and use tax is up 16.3%. Do you guys have any questions on the operating statement for July?
Yeah, underneath the general fund revenue highlights, I guess maybe the wording's throwing me off a little bit. The first two sentences there, so Rec Plex membership revenue is at $84,113, a decrease from last year of $10,000. So does that mean last year was approximately $94,000?
Correct.
Then the second sentence, facility rental increased $32,517 compared to last year's total of $67,000. So we're at $99,000. New date?
Last year was less than, so it was 32, less than $67,000, so that would be about 30, oh, 35, roughly. I believe that's what, yep.
So that should be decreased instead of increased in that second sentence?
Was that what I did? I apologize. Yeah, that would be confusing.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I guess, no, it did increase 32,000. Last year had, would have had 32,000. So it's increased 32,000 compared to last year for a total of 67,000. There we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. That's what we're missing, a comment. Thank you. I agree.
Okay, Brad, you have other questions?
No other questions.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept your financial statement.
Second.
Very well. Motion's been made in second to accept the financial statement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we have no unfinished business, nor new business. We'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Henshaw.
I have no concerns. We will have a public safety meeting this Thursday at 17:58 hours or 5:15 PM, and that's all I have.
Councilman West?
Yes, sir. So the Human Rights Commission met yesterday evening. So they finalized the recipient for the Jane Beederman Fike Humanitarian Award, and they're planning to present that at a city council meeting on October the 8th, I think is the date. And then they talked about budget for next year. They're wanting about $1,500 for various activities, Juneteenth being the $1,000 of it, $250 for the humanitarian award, and I don't remember what the other $250 was, but pretty, pretty minor request in my mind. And then they, we had the Celia request letter. So the Celia slave situation, we know happened 150 years ago or so, and so the commission approved a letter there, and all the members present signed it. We had a good turnout last night. I think we only had one person missing. So, and I have no concerns.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, I have no concerns. I'm also on the Public Safety Commission, and the meeting will be Thursday. A lot of things to, a lot of things to review and look at. It's been a while since we've had a meeting, so that's Thursday at 5:30. So otherwise, I have no concerns. Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Stone?
Yes, the Historic Preservation Commission changed their regularly scheduled meeting dates. We will now be meeting on the second Monday at 1 PM in the executive conference room. And so our next meeting is on the 9th of September, again at 1 o'clock in the executive conference room. I'm very happy to see two new members joining the Historic Preservation Commission. This will bring us to a full complement of our minimum number of members. So hopefully, we'll be able to have a quorum going forward and be able to, to do what we need to do in terms of the business. I do know that there will be some budget items that the Historic Preservation Commission will be requesting for next year's budget, and I have no concerns.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has been no airport advisory board meeting since our last council meeting. The airport lighting project is complete, just awaiting the flight check by the FAA. So definitely like to thank Kyle and his team for working a couple of years on getting that project going off the ground and then completed, so awesome job. Thank you, Kyle. In addition to our constituent that came in earlier, definitely a good reminder, I think, for all of us, schools in session. I know myself, I have two young kids on school buses, and it's been pretty chaotic on the roads everywhere. Schools with a new kindergarten on the north end, everyone's adjusting to the school buses going there, the times, the differences. So definitely not only for us, but everyone listening and all of our fellow citizens, please just take that extra minute to, you know, get to where you're going, watch out for the buses, and pay attention, and keep all of our little ones safe out there. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't able to attend the park board meeting that was scheduled on the 15th, so if you have anything you want, definitely need to be aware. Alrighty. The other thing is on, in September coming up, a historical football game will be played at Beacon Woods coming in September, I think the 14th. So it's going to be an exciting time on the west end of, over here in Fulton, off West Minister's. So that's pretty exciting. Not only that, the last, the book giveaway, the school supplies, you know, that turned out to be a pretty good event on that Saturday. Thank Chief for your support, and officers in the fire department, we thank you for them being there and in support of us, and that was a great, great hour. Appreciate your support of the council here as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a list tonight, I'm sorry. First, I want to make sure everybody is aware that the city is hosting a tire recycling event. There are flyers available here at City Hall. If you want to stop by and grab one, that is going to be September 28th. It's a Saturday from 8 to noon. $3 for passenger tires and $10 for heavy truck or tractor tires. I know that we've talked about this several times, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Again, that's September 28th from 8 to 12. The lead service inventory survey is getting ready to go out. I know we talked about that a couple of council meetings ago. The city is going to be offering a $250 gift card for people that participate in that. There will be one winner, so we're just encouraging everybody to make sure that they're filling that out and submitting it. It's really important for us to get those back. And then last on my list, I have the annual incremental rate increase. I know the utility board has supported this and recommended this previously. It is on the agenda for tonight. The C P I is set by the state, and that is set in July, around July, August, which is great timing, because it's right before our budget. They're recommending the incremental rate increases that we're trying to provide our citizens time to prepare, instead of having to give a huge increase that's reactionary. We're giving everybody something to prepare for each and every year. This year, I believe the proposed rates for electric are 1.74%, gas 0.17%, water 1.81%. And those would be on top of the C P I that's set of the state, by the state, and that is going to be 5% or less. So if the state is recommending something higher, it will not exceed that 5%. Darrell? Anything that I missed? Courtney?
I think Darrell's just excited because he knows he's going to get to come up later and talk about it. So I think you covered that incredibly well. Thank you.
Yes, and I would like to point out, too, that we have a couple of our utility board members here. This is a really important issue. This is something that we've worked really, really hard on as a board, and the numbers that, that have been presented are a solid plan for us to replenish our reserves, but not to present something that is unaffordable to our citizens. We realize that any increase, nobody wants to have to give an increase. Nobody wants to have to pay more. We do not want to have to pay more, but unfortunately, you know, we do have to have, we have to be prepared in case of emergency. Last year, we saw it. Three years ago, we saw it, where the gas prices skyrocketed because of the temperatures. And we want to be prepared as a city, because we do, we have the ability to control our utilities ourselves, which is great. And we want to be able to continue to do that.
Warren, one of the other things, too, that I wanted to bring out, too, is, one of the questions is, is will the, the council be able to review this? And yes, we'll be able to review this every two years.
Mm-hmm, yes. Thank you for pointing that out, Bill. I think that's all.
Okay. Thank you. That was, that was a very good report. I just want to kind of...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I've got one other item I forgot to talk about, that probably several people in this room saw, was just recently, there was a very bad car accident once again at Tennessee Route C involving a dump truck and a small passenger car. Thank God, no one was killed. Looking at the wreckage, I'm surprised there was no more injuries, and they were able to walk away. But I guess, once again, this brings delight, you know, the, the safety concern of Tennessee Route C, and do we need to pursue this again as far as maybe a four-way stop? What do we need to do to keep these accidents from happening?
Okay, thank you.
I would point out, oh, I'm so sorry, Mayor. You're not going to get a word in edgewise tonight.
That will be a discussion to Thursday night at the safety meeting, and Kyle has already sent a letter, I believe, to the state requesting that they do a four-way stop there, or I think he said a roundabout. Chances of that are pretty slim, but, and it'll probably be years before it happens, but we've started that ball rolling. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I couldn't have said it better. Thank you very much.
Okay, I also want to echo what Brad said. We have buses out there, we have kids out there. It's been very, very chaotic this first week. Wood Street was just a disaster. And Ty and I talked about this three months ago, and they thought they were having that, those issues taken care of with the cars backing up, but I think due to some of the construction that still needs to be done, and some dirt that still needs to be moved, I think that they're working on it and will get it. I know Chief Ladwick and his people were, well, he doesn't have any hair, but they were pulling their hair out because, because that was a mess.
I apologize for that, Chief. That was not nice.
But I don't have any either.
Especially coming from somebody in a very similar situation.
I don't have it either, so I can say that. Chief, you want to address that real quick for us? I know that's been a big issue across the city.
Took a few minutes to get even. Go right ahead.
Well, okay, talk about hair. I sat up there this afternoon and watched the traffic, and it was much better than what it was the first week of school. I think, I'll, I'll see Dr. Crane tomorrow evening at school board meeting, and I'll discuss what we might be able to do, but shifting the kids maybe coming out just a few minutes earlier would help immensely. But I can't afford to have three officers up there every afternoon and morning trying to direct traffic. But today was much, much better than what it was the first two, three days of school. But we're keeping a close eye on that, just so you know.
Very good, thank you. I, I know that it's going to take some time to get the flow and everybody scheduling, so I know it'll get better. It's just going to take some time, and we just need to have some patience. Okay? All right, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 3548 is the storm grant, water grant. Councilman Stone, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3548, 2024 City of Fulton Stormwater Grant. A resolution of the City of Fulton, Missouri, stating intent to seek funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and authorizing Steve F. Myers, Mayor, and Courtney Doyle, Director of Administration, to pursue activities in an attempt to secure funding for improvements and updates to stormwater infrastructure bounded by Westminster Avenue to the west, West Eighth Street to the north, Nichols Street to the east, and West Fifth Street to the south. I make a motion to pass Resolution 3548 at tonight's meeting.
Okay. Okay, I think we've, during a public hearing, we've heard quite a bit about this. So do we have any discussion? Mike, Bill, do you all have any? Oh, you got your mic?
No.
Something else. Okay, all in favor of passing Resolution 3548? Please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose?
Very good, thank you. We're going to try to get that along as quickly as we can. I know Westminster has some issues up there that we need to get taken care of. Next, we have Resolution 3549, Financial Adjustments. Councilman Nelson, would you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3549, Financial Adjustments. A resolution authorizing the adjustment of financial records for specified city funds and establishing an effective date. Make a motion, we place Resolution 3549 for second reading at the next council meeting. Oh, resolution, I'm sorry. I, I make a motion, we pass that at tonight's council meeting.
Second?
Very well. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We'll move on to Resolution 3550, and that's the demolition services for the building across the street. Councilman Henshaw, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3550, Demolition Services Contract with, with Oscar Whiskey November. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the engineering firm OWN of Columbia, Missouri, to prepare bidding and contract documents in order to solicit bid for demolition services of this structure commonly known as Mike and Laura's building, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 3550 at this council meeting.
Very well. Do we have any discussion on that? That's, the wording on that, I understand, can be very important. That's, the wording on that, I understand, can be very important. It's going to be a very delicate situation to get that down. So if you have any questions, we'll try to answer those.
The bid is just on the demolition and removal of the materials, right? It's not about what's going to happen next? That'll be, that'll be a future discussion.
Yeah, just taking it down.
Yes, so this is actually for the contract, or a contract to get to that point, but yes, nothing further at this point.
I guess to clarify even further, so a contract, so this is just seeing how much it's going to cost? This isn't spending any money, correct?
This is a contract with an engineering firm to see what that anticipated cost would be and how structurally it would be safe to remove the derelict property and maintain the integrity of those other two.
Yeah, my question too was, after we get that information, did it allow me to...
Okay, all in, second, a motion's been made in second for Resolutions 3550. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Thank you. Now we'll move on to ordinances. We'll have Bill Number 1723, amended parking on Westminster Avenue. Councilman Stone, would you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1723, amended parking on Westminster Avenue prohibited or limited. An ordinance amending Chapter 110 Traffic and Vehicles, Section 110-340, parking on certain streets prohibited of limited Fulton City Code by prohibiting stopping, standing, and parking on portions of Westminster Avenue and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1723 for second reading at the next scheduled council
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions?
Yes. I'd like to more detail. Why, why is this desired? I mean, notes I see say something about a lighted beacon placement. I don't know, I don't even know what that is. Could we get more explanation what we're doing here? And why?
Yes, Mike.
Thank you.
So where the crosswalks are on Westminster Avenue above the college, trying to give more sight distance to those crosswalks and the following ordinance is what is a project that's going to construct some beacons at those crosswalks. So when students are at those crosswalks, they can push a button and it'll, it'll, it'll have a blast of light basically at you, you know, beacons. And so it'll provide some safety on those crosswalks.
Okay, great. I hadn't, I have never seen that. So, okay, thank you so much.
And I'm sorry, Kyle, will these be at the intersections or is it also going to be at the crosswalk there at Fifth Street?
It's...
That crosses Westminster, that does not have a stop sign?
It's, it's really for those mid-blocks that you're talking about. So where there is no control and there's through traffic, so there's, there's one near Fifth Street, one Sixth Street, and one north of Seventh Street. So, yeah.
And just, just to explain to myself and those listening, what's, what's the expectation of the oncoming traffic when they see those, those mid-block intersect, those mid-block crosswalks?
Right.
Because they're, they're there to bring our attention, but they're also, they don't really expect any change in the traffic. It's more about the students watching the traffic, not the traffic watching the students.
Right, so when traffic sees those lights come on, then they will, they will need to come to a stop because, you know, be very alert because there should be, there should be somebody walking through that mid-block crosswalk and using it. So it's to add safety there. They see it, they should slow down. They see somebody in the crosswalk, they'll, they'll stop. So there'll be a added kind of stop line through there, though it's not controlled, there'll be a spot that kind of indicates where to stop at.
Okay, that was going to be my question is, what's the, what's the legal requirement for that traffic? And then are we going to offer them some additional lines and opportunities?
Correct, there will be some additional.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
College, and it's very helpful. Very, yeah. You see that light, you need to slow down and stop.
I have to say too that driving through Westminster Avenue on a daily basis around one o'clock, the students do not stop. They walk right on across the street and they expect you to stop for them. And I don't know in that situation, who, does the student have the right of way or does the car?
Anytime somebody puts their foot down on a crosswalk, the cars are required to stop.
So I think this is a great idea.
This just makes it more visible to let people know.
Warrensburg had a similar approach around Central Missouri University. When my daughter was there, I noted it was like the whole area, all the residents know to stop if the kids, if the students are stepping out. So it's maybe a little bit of a paradigm shift for all of our drivers in town as well.
Well, I have to say, always stop because they're not gonna, they're gonna keep going.
Well...
And that's not just the crosswalks at Westminster. Any crosswalk, any valid crosswalk in town, if you, the minute the pedestrian puts their foot down on that crosswalk, the cars are supposed to stop.
That's what the examiner, the Missouri examiner shared with my, with my class. Anyone, once they on the curb, they find, as they step into the crosswalk, then you have, you have to stop.
We just have to be aware that that's going to require a lot of education to the community because that's, that's not commonly known.
Well, I, I would add that, you know, we've had to go through a little bit of effort to finally get this project going. There's, it took three bids to, as busy as contractors are these days and some reshuffling of how that, of how we did the bid to get a contractor interested. It almost, you know, felt pointless for a little bit. It was almost a boondoggle there for a little bit. And then we finally, that third bid, we got, we got a bidder and, and it was close to our estimate, and we feel very fortunate this is going to, going to be in place for, for, for our students.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Bill Number 1723. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Now Councilman Luther, would you read Bill Number 1724 for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1724, Crosswalk and Traffic Signal Project Contract with Meyer Electric. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Meyer Electric upon approval from the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Program Agreement regarding federal project number TAP-2700-511 and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1724 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Okay, a motion's been made in second to pass Bill 1724 on to the next meeting. Any discussion?
Do we have a timeline on when we, once, if we approve it at the next meeting, when we might have this finished?
I don't think we'll have a timeline at this point. We don't, Kyle, may, do we, we don't have a timeline yet. Do we?
Do we have a timeline? I mean, we, I see we had to go through MODOT to get it, get it approved as well. Do we have a timeline when we think this will be finished?
When we think the project will be finished?
Yes, sir.
I would hesitate to give you that just because we are dependent on MODOT at the time, at this time. So next meeting, I should be able to give you a better answer to that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kyle, how many crosswalks will be impacted? Do we know that?
There, I believe there's nine in this, in this grant.
Right. That includes Business 54 and Wood Street and...
Right.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of passing Bill Number 1724 on to the next meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Councilwoman Nelson, would you read Bill Number 1725 for us, please? The annual increment rate increase for utilities?
Mr. Mayor, I would be delighted. Bill Number 1725, Annual Incremental Rate Increase for Utility Services. An ordinance establishing an annual incremental rate increase for the City of Fulton Utility Services based on the Consumer Price Index, CPI. Make a motion, we place Bill Number 1725 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Thank you. We have a first and a second for Bill Number 1725. Do we have discussion? I think a lot of questions have been answered over the last week for everyone, and this will be the first reading, so we will have probably two more readings. I think Daryl could probably answer some questions for us to move this along.
Yeah, I talked to Daryl a little bit prior to the meeting. Looking at this, Section 4, not too fond of. And what I'm, what I'm getting at is the checks and balances, similar to what some of the bigger utilities go through, such as a Public Service Commission, things like that, that we can't just raise rates because we want to raise rates without kind of checks and balances, approvals along the way to make sure we're doing it for the right reasons and the right things. So I definitely agree it's a good idea that we have something in place because we went way too long without a rate increase and got us in the position we are now. So definitely a process in place. Of course, I'm open to some word interpretations if we want to pursue an amendment, but some of the ideas I was thinking, was kind of contemplating, like Section 4, instead of the city council may, it will be a city council will review and approve rate increases annually. And then to add that checks and balances, if you could have the approval by the utility board prior to coming to the council, right? So utility board's on board, we're going to raise rates 1.7 percent. Here's why, because building our reserves, we've got capital projects in play, in place, you know, giving us the reason, and not just us, it's for the citizens, right? And then it comes to us for approval, and that way the citizens also have an opportunity to, okay, this is why they're going up. I understand why we need to keep our, our grid, our generation, everything's stable, reliable, makes sense, so no consternation there. Instead of, at least the way I interpret this is just it goes up and automatically, and the citizens may or may not have an understanding as to why. So I guess I'm open to some ideas on what that really looks like, but that's kind of how I, at least I'm currently reading it, so Daryl, I'm open to...
Okay. We do have a couple utility board members here, and I thank them for showing up because we, we challenged them last year to come up with a long-term strategic plan, and we all talk about strategic plans all the time, and more times than not, they don't, they don't get done. But the U-Board spent a lot of time working out a strategic plan of how to get the reserves up and what number that is. So as we reviewed what other people had done and talked about it, we found that Carthage, Missouri, had a way of doing it that they hired somebody to figure out for them, and then Marshall used the same process. So then we brought that process to the U-Board and said, here's the process two other cities are using, and you ended up with a min and a max for each fund. And it was based upon the largest bill you had to pay per, per year for what, a loan or whatever. And then you had 45 days of O&amp;M cost, purchase power and purchase gas cost. That's your min. And then your max was 180 days. And what we came up with, and a lot of the discussion was, how long do you want to take to build your reserve back up? That was discussed, Charles, I don't know how long that discussion, just that number lasted. So on the electric and the gas, we settled on six years. The water, seeing it wasn't as, not as many outside forces affected water. You didn't have your ice storms, you didn't have your cold weather events, but you do have DNR and you do have tank maintenance that we have to do. So water was stretched out to nine. Sewer already met the minimum, so there is not an incremental reserve increase for sewer. Sewer is already there. And your ranges was, was very wild, were very challenging because why water, you know, the min and the max wasn't that far apart. But electric, with your, your power prices, and we used the last three years on O&amp;M and power purchases and gas purchases. Well, the min and max on electric was 7.99 to 13 million, 13 being the max, 7.99 being the min. On the gas, it was 2.5 million to five. But when you got to, to water, it was 4.9 to 5.2. So since you didn't have that purchase cost, it really shrunk that min and max. So that's, that's what we came up with, and we came up with a, a system to figure those costs and not just pull numbers out of the air. And it's, it's a system that can be updated. We was thinking every two years because Dustin did a lot of work with me and the, and the board and Courtney of trying to figure out how to, how to do these numbers and to make it work. So where we're at for year one is electrics a 1.74, gas is a .17, and water's a 1.81. So that's, that's the reserve portion of it. We did not really deal with solid waste because basically we have trucks and drivers, and our trucks are insured through Mirma if a tornado hit the warehouse and wiped out the trucks. So we left solid waste off. We do have a closed landfill, trying to anticipate any costs that DNR may come up with on that. We just really couldn't get our handle on it, so we said, let's, let's deal with the other four and be done with it. But the U-Board took the challenge of actually coming up with a strategic plan to come up with this. The other part, which Ms. Nelson went over, was coming up with a small rate increase each year, just come up to keep up with rising cost. And we was looking at CPIs, and nobody wanted to use a national CPI, and nobody wanted to use a regional CPI. We wanted to use a Missouri CPI. And under state law, there is one that is done every year and is done by the auditor. So we all felt that was a believable number, and it was relative to Fulton, not to New Jersey, whatever. So that's, that is the two pieces, and I want to thank again the U-Board for all their hard work because we definitely said, we got to come up with something because we know our reserves are low. We got to come up with a number of what the reserve should be and how do we get there? And we've got two members sitting back there right now. Do you, you folks have anything you'd like to say that? I just want to say thank you again because I know it was difficult. I know it was hard. And they asked a lot of hard questions of us, and there was lively debate, to say the least.
Mayor, council members, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. Charles Williams, 408 West 12th Street. I have been on this board probably about seven, eight years. It seems like I ascended to the role of president now. And, and I appreciate the councilman's concern about Section 4. From what I've understand from past historical means, it was common practice at the U-Boards went on and did what they did and pretty much sent it to council, saying, this is it, we're done with it, we need you to vote on it, and it was done. And Courtney brought tonight, which I thought was very good, that we got to be a little bit more transparent because that's what the residents want. And at first, I don't believe that Section 4 naming the city council on this even was on there at first, which would have left you out altogether, which means we wouldn't have been transparent. We would just say, you know, this, we, we did a lot of work. It's been over a year that we came up with all this, over a year. Lot of hours, one, one board meeting, three, four hours in one board meeting, hashing this stuff out. So when you get something from us, trust me, we went and dotted eyes, crossed our teeth, cried, yelled at each other, left, went, had lunch, and come back. Because we don't believe in sending junk to you all. When we send it to you, we're sending it with love, we're sending it with the best of concerns for the folk, the citizens of Fulton. of concerns for the citizens of Fulton. Because like Councilman Combs said, hey, I got to pay the bills too. You know, this is, I'm not, you know, I'm not exempt from paying these bills, so when we have to increase rates, when we're forced to do that, it's for the best interest of everybody. The CPI, I think it's a good thing, because it's also showing that we could comply with the state of Missouri's CPI and their laws. You know, you, you got a lot of little pockets of counties that start doing their own little things, and then it's a little too late to get in trouble with it. But at least we have went out and researched in different areas. We didn't just stay at home, we didn't stay within parameters of Jeff City and Columbia. Darrell and Wade went way out the way, way out the way to find things, how to best suit Fulton by using other models. So, I believe that this is a good thing. CPI is keeping us, first, transparent to the council, but the citizens of Fulton, and two, it shows that we can comply to state the way they do things as far as audit and how they take care of their people. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
I also have a couple of questions. I very much agree with the, the foundation and the formulas that we're looking at and looking at CPI, but I, I also agree that I think we need a little bit more detail in, in the ordinance. You know, we had talked about that we were going to be looking at it, you know, the one that says in July, or June, or August, to get that annual, but that's not written in here anywhere. The only dates that are written in here are January, which means, again, we might be setting a budget, but then we're going to be setting rates after we set the budget. So, I think we need to put, I think we need to put a timeframe in which we're going to review the CPI and set the rate by that CPI, whether it be the July, or August, or June CPI. There's also been discussion around a maximum. I've heard 5% said many times, but it's not in the ordinance. I believe we need to clarify that. I believe we need to add that to the ordinance that we will look at.
I think that's by state statute.
Yeah, that's.
5% is state statute.
I understand, but I think we can add that to our ordinance without any concerns about, you know, conflicting with state statute, but it makes it more transparent. And is the 5% the maximum that it's going to be, or is it the maximum CPI that we're going to look at? So then we would still add the 1 point whatever to electric to that, or are we capping everything at a maximum of 5%?
It is the two pieces.
Okay. And I believe we should also put that into the, that we'll have a cap of 5%, and then we'll add that.
Yeah, it won't affect wastewater.
Right.
It'll just be the CPI on wastewater. And we, we like your, the discussion here, because, to be honest with you, at least on my part, we have worked so long on this.
Yeah.
We're probably.
Forest for the trees type of stuff? No, you have done an excellent job. I, any questions that you're getting from us today are not diminishing all of the hard work that you have put into this. This is absolutely amazing. And you've used real math, real numbers, real history, real comparisons, everything to get to these numbers. They're not just, well, we think this will get us through next year, we think this will get us a couple of years. You're actually doing some very great work. It's just adding a little more detail to the, to the paperwork, and just more understanding from everybody of exactly what numbers are we talking about when we say 5%.
And we're trying not to hit those reserves in our, in our budget, like the, the draft electric budget. It's still a draft, but we know that we're going to have to buy a substation transformer in the nearer future than long.
We need to have to buy two, if we're really looking at the, at the growth and expansion of what we want to do in this town?
What's in the draft, though, is 300,000 for this year, 300,000 for next year, and then 300,000 so we can buy it in the fourth year, but we've set aside money for it instead of pulling out these reserves that we're trying to build up right now. We don't want to say we're trying to build them up and then we're tearing them down at the same time.
And that's not the end of the story either, because there's, there's, once, once you decide that you want to buy a transformer, how long does it take to get one?
Year, one year.
And the rates are still set each year by us, right? And the budget's still approved each year by us? And so if we determine that maybe we don't need a rate increase, or maybe we have, you know, we had a very healthy year, and we, I know we have other funding that is hitting our reserve account right now, and hopefully that, that funding will stay there and not be pulled back out again by the state, not by us. So, I think we have lots of opportunity, but I would, I would like to see those additions made to the amendment when it comes back for second reading.
Okay. Thank you. I think we would like to see it passed tonight for the first reading, and I would like to see anyone and all of you with any questions to get with staff over the next week or so, and we can revise before the next reading of it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would, I would echo that. I think we have a lot of, a lot of excellent points that have been brought up here tonight, and I would agree Darrell's mentioned, you know, a lot of time and effort has gone into this by the Public Utility Board, by staff, and the, and the goal was to do it in a very demure, very mindful way, so that, again, we're very cognizant of the needs of the community, and we're not overburdening, right? So, I think we do have some excellent things that were brought up this evening, things that we can incorporate and bring back to you in an amended ordinance that everyone would feel comfortable with at the next meeting, if we can go ahead and move it forward. And the thing I would ask is if you guys could, you're always welcome to call, you're welcome to come in and talk to us, but so that we're all hearing the same information at the same time, drop it in an email, and we can make sure that Kathy gets that out to everybody, because sometimes when all these ideas are shared, things get lost, right? So, I think it would be helpful, if you have something, feel free to call, feel free to stop by, but let's drop it down in an email so we're all getting the same story at the same time. Okay? Excellent.
Okay, that being said, do I hear a, well, we have a motion. All in favor of passing this on to the next council meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Very good, thank you. And again, I want to thank the U-Board. I attended those meetings, and those people worked really hard. Dustin, thank you. And certainly Darrell, you, you were involved in the whole thing from the get-go, so I want to thank all of you for the hard work that you put in on this. Okay, we'll move on to Bill Number 1720 for second reading. Councilman Henchy, would you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1720, repealing fire resource truck agreement, an ordinance repealing, ordinance Number 928-03, Bill 1029, in relation to the resource truck agreement between the City of Fulton Fire Department and local fire protection district, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1720 for the third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Very good. I think we've discussed this. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Councilman, you read that bill again for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1720, repealing the fire resource truck agreement, an ordinance repealing ordinance of 928-03, Bill Number 1029, in relations to the resource truck agreement between the City of Fulton Fire Department and local fire protection districts, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1720 for the final passage at this council meeting.
Excellent.
Very well. All in favor of the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Combs. Seven council members affirmative.
Thank you. We'll move on to Bill Number 1721, and that's the tax rate we had the public hearing on earlier.
Yes.
Councilman West, would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Bill Number 1721, 2024 Tax Rate Levy, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and levying taxes for the calendar year of 2024 on all taxable property in the City of Fulton at $0.5427 for each $100 of the assessment valuation of said property and establishing an effective date. I move that we place Bill Number 1721 for third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. We have a motion in the second.
Third reading, sorry. Move to third reading at this council meeting, sorry.
All in favor of moving 1721 to third reading at the next meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Councilman, you read that again for us, please?
I did have one discussion point. When we read this for first reading last meeting, it was at 5271. So, why did it change? That'd be my only question.
It was, well, go ahead.
Yeah, that's okay. And I was actually going to note that, thank you so much, Councilman West. On your agenda, you'll see that it is amended. So, we were notified by the state auditor's office and the Callaway County Clerk's office that there was a miscalculation, and so that resulted in the rate change, which was a variance of approximately .0156.
Yeah, it's not much.
Not much, but still important.
That's right.
And so, when Kathy was notified of that, she obviously went through the appropriate steps to make sure that the public notice was put back out with the corrected amount, and then that public hearing was done according to that corrected amount as well. So, again, this is that amended amount, which is now .5427. It is different from what you guys read that first time.
And it makes it a good thing that we didn't do the, the hearing last meeting.
Emergency, there you go.
We got to do it twice. All right, ready?
Yeah.
All right. So, Bill Number 1721, 2024 Tax Rate Levy, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and levying taxes for the calendar year of 2024 on all taxable property in the City of Fulton at $0.5427 for each $100 of the assessed valuation of said property and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1721 for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. We have a motion in second to move Bill 1721 for third reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs? Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Seven councilmen.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to Bill Number 1722, and I think Kyle has requested that we read this for the second time tonight and the third time at the following meeting. Okay? Councilman Reclu?
Yes. Bill Number 1722, Willow Creek South Plat, Plat 1 final, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to approve the final plat for Willow Creek South Plat 1. I make a motion for Bill Number 1721 to be moved to council, yeah, to, to, at tonight's meeting, to be, okay. 1722, to, yeah, at the next, yes, third meeting. Got to get it right. Got to get it right.
I second Bill Number 1722 for third reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Same here.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We have a few announcements. Tomorrow night is the bow hunting permit meeting, the safety meeting. That'll be at Legends at 6:30.
Mayor, may I interject something on that, too? That is, that is a really, really important program, because not only does it allow people to hunt in city limits when they have the proper training, but it also decreases the population of the deer, so that people don't end up hitting deer and having deer cause problems in our, in our city. So, it's a very important program.
I want to also say, on that same note, I've heard several people commenting on making sure that people stay within the bounds of where they're supposed to be hunting and not, not going on to private property. I think that's maybe been a problem in the past, so make sure whenever you're taking this class to really listen to what the boundaries are.
Do you have any private property?
Private.
This safety meeting is only for people hunting on city property. You can hunt anywhere in Fulton that you want to on private property without having, without attending this meeting.
With permission, though.
If you have five acres or more.
Well, I, I think they've done away with that, maybe.
We can provide clarification on that, that way everyone knows what the rules are. So, I'm sure they'll talk about it tomorrow night, and we can certainly provide something on social media.
You've given permission to hunt your property? Okay, thank you. Well, we're also going to, we've got the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament coming up September 20th. I hope as many of you out there and here will attend as, as possible. It's, I think it's a, a great organization. We're benefiting this year, the United Way. I know Laura's been working very hard getting, getting her people involved and a lot of their members, and so everyone that can, please come out. I know Tara and Jamie have been working hard getting, do you have anything you want to pass on? Okay. I know you all have been working very hard getting sponsors and, and things lined up for that, and so as many people as can play, it's certainly going to benefit our United Way, which benefits many, many people throughout the county. I know Chief Singh is on the board of United Way, and they, they do a great job distributing their money throughout the organizations and helps, helps a lot of people in our county. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, September 10th at 6:30. And it's, and a reminder, the city council will not meet on September 24th. So, we'll be out on that date. So, unless somebody has something else, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Perfect, this is wonderful.
We had a big agenda tonight, and we moved through it very quickly.